Gotcha. You're good.
Yes. It is six o'clock. It's six o'clock and I'm gonna call to order this October meeting of the Dandel School Board of Directors. And we're all in the room, so there's no need to necessarily. Say hello to everybody, but we're all here. Actually, Superintendent Dan Landry is here. The board is here, the principals are here, we have one member of the public here. So, the meeting has started. When I go to additions and changes to the agenda, I had on the agenda from last month, a preliminary budget discussion. But the superintendent is not back yet. I spoke to Mike last week. He's working through the budgets, but he's not been able to bounce those off of anybody yet, and that's gonna be a marketing and handling thing. And so we're gonna take that off the agenda if I can get a motion to do so. So, thank you, sir. Dave in a second there, so I'd like to remove preliminary budget from the agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
There'll be some talk about money, but it won't be the entire budget. The SU budget is not ready yet either. Alright, moving past any other additions or changes to the agenda while I'm here?
I have, I don't know if this fits in this section, but just to officially request financial documents for the board, either quarterly or monthly. Just as best practice for us to see those. Whether we wanna add that here or another, another time.
So, can I add that under future agenda items?
Yeah.
Rather than here because I can't put any action on that tonight?
Okay.
So, if I say under future agenda items that we'd like to start receiving, like we do with some of the things. Some quarterly financial documentation.
Yes, yeah.
So we'll do that later, just remind me later. That's okay?
Yeah.
Okay. So, hearing no other, I'm gonna move on to the minutes from September fifth. Another minute from September fifth is here. Molly wrote them up, reviewed them last month. Did you guys have a chance to take a look at them, those of you that were here? Any questions about them? I, there was one clarification that I saw with Randy about the, the bid for. The bid for the seventy fund and the name that it's on, it's on the cedar, and that was a not to exceed number that we voted on. That was listed on there and it was hours for, for a machine. I talked to Molly about that.
I changed the language in that.
No, because we didn't say it, but just, just so that we noted, like, there was a couple of follow-up questions, but the way it's written is the way it happened.
Alright.
So, past that, there's no, I have no changes. Anybody have any changes? We don't entertain a motion from those of you that were here.
I would make a motion.
Thank you, sir. I've got a motion to approve the minutes from September fifth, twenty twenty-three. I got a second.
One second.
Is there discussion? All in favor of approving those minutes, please say aye.
Right, right.
Alright, great. A motion carries. Alright, now we're moving to administrative reports and I've got Nancy to give us a two for. So she's got some information for us as the superintendent. She's got some information for us later as the special services director.
Yeah.
Is there anything you wanna tell us about your report here, other than what's written down?
No, I just tried to look at Mark's reports and figure out what you might wanna know, but the important changes that came up really relate to that annual snapshot. Because that's new information that was just released. From the AOE and as a supervisory union. We were designated as need of equity supports. Which means that students in the free and reduced lunch population, students without EPs or historically marginalized. Did not perform as well on standardized statewide assessment as peers not in these groups. So we're still in the process of digging through the data to find out exactly what that means and Des Hertz is working closely with the AOE. To see what we could put in place, but she did need to add a CIP goal as a result of this, which I attached.
Okay. And do we hear anybody have any questions about the continuous improvement plan? In that. If you went over that at the SU meeting last time, that gets received by the SU board on behalf of the districts. And then there were two other. There were two policies that were, that were put in place at the SU level last month and they pertain to financials and money and they're listed in the SU. They're listed on the SU minutes, if you want to, they'll be on behalf of the district, but they weren't related to students in any way. And I'll forward those to you. They were today, forgot to do that. But they were accepted on behalf of this. District already by the SU. Tell me more, so I'm gonna move on to special services report. If there's nothing for the superintendent, or Anna as the superintendent?
Great.
How's the school psychologist working?
I just. Signed a contract today for a full-time school psychologist.
An in-person person?
No, remote. He's in California, but he started as special educator, has a lot of experience, so. This isn't the first month, so I'm not, I'm not. Holding my breath yet until he actually gets his Vermont license insurance charge. It could take two to three weeks. However, it is looking better. The other part-time person has started doing some remote assessments and we're. Kind of still working the kinks out of the system for what that looks like.
How glaring is this need?
It's glaring. You know, students. Some students will do fine with remote assessments, but it's certainly not for everybody. I do have somebody local who I am able to contract with for students with more complex needs. Who really would not be able to access anything virtually, but there are zero applicants, zero. Or even close enough to commute, you know, like, so this new person is in California. There, there's nobody I had reached out to, to colleges and universities who offer it in New Hampshire and in Vermont. No applicants, so. So we are making the best of what we have.
Okay.
The tech department's been really helpful in working through the technology glitches, because there's been a lot of them. We piloted, I think, one last week. And one of our special educators were really closely with them to get the glitches out so that when it was student-facing, it would be better and it seemed like it went. Fine, so that was. That's a huge blessing for, for them to be stepping up for all that, so.
Just another continuing challenge we're not thinking about all the time. Okay. Any questions? Right, principals report. Does anybody have any questions for the principals? As was asked for, there's enrollment numbers.
Yeah, yeah. It's a little startling. The plan, and I think last year we had a hundred and twenty-seven in high school at this time. Thank, just a follow-up one. Jenny's comment about the fourteen that we know of who left, do you, have you checked in with them and do you know? Any more information about why they left or what the situations are?
No, there were no exit interviews that were done at the end of last year.
Okay.
Um, so I don't have. I don't have data about specifically why certain students. We can do that going forward for sure and.
Many of them were planned, and we're not a surprise.
Okay.
They have parents that live out of district. And are able to choose, and so there was quite a few that we knew that were leaving anyways. So.
And some that weren't, and so it says you're gonna go talk to one of kids. Right, when it's time?
Yeah, tomorrow.
Have to. We have to just work to get back. Making our place seem like a place that the kids might want to send us to high school. Yeah, recruiting, recruiting, because that, that, we were counting on, we were counting on what is grade nine now to be a big class to hold us through for. Few years to have a bunch of kids and it's a smaller class than the others.
Yeah, it's very small. Do you feel like Danville works as bringing students in or is it pretty level in terms of what it's been play hard for Natalie to?
Yeah, I have historical data to. Yeah, to really comment meaningfully on that. I think one of the strengths of our high school program is the flexible pathways that we offer and the multiple. Engagement points we have and our ability to personalize, so being small does allow us to. To do a good job with independent studies or getting kids work study credit like. So, that's what we'll kind of be. Marketing while still having access to all the other. Programs that the other schools offer, you know? That's really, that's, for me, that's our draw, is that we're still that small community-based school, but. We have access to all the regional resources, so you're not missing out, not attending LI or St. John's County.
And there is an after-school program, but you underscored.
Uh, yeah, I would love to talk more about the after-school program. That's, it's a huge. Concern right now. We have enough staff, so we reopened, we're, we have about twenty-eight. Kids, I think there's a few that dropped off even since writing that. We're working on building more enrichment programs. A big piece of my concern is how we're funding it moving forward. It's been funded the last several years since it went to free for Dandel students through Esther Funding. And that's ending at the end of the school year. It, my very first year, there was a very small budget line that didn't pay for. Very much of the program was either ten or twenty thousand. I don't remember. That helped a little bit. One of the things that the SU is looking at is a twenty-one C grant, but there's a lot of hoops that we have to jump through. Both as an SU and as a school, and currently the program isn't meeting those qualifications. But one of the big pieces that actually I just found out today that might. Impact to us is whether or not we qualify and we hit the percentage for titles funds. Because if we don't hit that, we wouldn't qualify anyways, so that's.
And that is doing the best.
The data's already due, the data had, all of the forms were due by Friday, but the numbers and stuff aren't gonna be run and finalized. Until November, so. We did a really, really hard push for them and targeted push and. We didn't get the turnaround that we were hoping for, so.
Any questions? Is that the answer to your question right now?
Well, I know that if people had known that they could just put on there that they didn't actually have to mark their information, you may have gotten more back. Because appropriately, you can just put your household demographic, you know, two children and your parents, and then you could just write on it, I don't qualify. That actually is considered a. Completed form that in most parents, a lot of people would have returned it. They just didn't want their information in the office. Which is a bunch of feedback I got from parents. They just. It's a privacy thing. They don't think that people need to know how much their household make.
Yeah, I, yeah, I understand that absolutely. I also know there's a lot that probably would have qualified that we did not get back.
Right, but if they had known, they could have just filled out the number of students and people in the household. They just wrote, I don't qualify. That counts as returning the form as far as when they're looking at it.
But it doesn't get us, it doesn't get us qualifying kids.
Yeah, that's not, yeah.
You say I don't qualify, then when you send that back, it's good to give her the participation, but it wouldn't, then those kids, they wouldn't qualify. Though, I think the ones.
The forms would have come back and the idea to get the forms back.
No, yeah.
How was expressed? If you read this.
That's right, it's, it's, it's expressed, it's, it's expressed that way so that people send the forms back, but specifically the people who would qualify for the ser, for the services and help us.
Yeah.
So like we sent my form back. It's nice to have my form back, so then it's here and they can, we're gonna ask again. I should already send it, but my, my kids don't change those numbers.
My, mine doesn't either.
Right, like that.
I just wrote on it. We don't qualify, so I didn't mark it, demographic, income.
Right.
So you don't, you, you don't land in the one that gets us title funds and I don't, we don't want to like this title fund, so.
And you speak with them how to complete the form.
It's tough to say, yeah.
But putting those two in, you're lowering the.
No, no, they just don't count.
They just, it just doesn't count, no.
Because if you, if you got a hundred percent of them back, then you'd know how many people.
You'd have the most accurate view of the school.
If you get, if you get forty percent of them back, the other sixty percent, you don't know the answer to the question. So, and so somewhere in there is where we are.
Yep, it's not our reporting system. So.
I don't like it either.
I don't either, but it's not our reporting system.
Alright, that was the principals report. Other questions further about the principal? You'll notice there is no student report. So, I met with, Natalie and I met with our student rep and she is, she's new. She has volleyball, she's never done it before, it's, it's nerve-wracking. We talked to her about some stuff. She seemed like she was going to do something. And then we'll have to meet again, so this is gonna be a process to get her going, right? You guys met her last year, she's Kaylee Grixell, she's our student rep. She plays volleyball on Tuesday nights and Thursday nights, and she has practiced some of the other days, and she plays volleyball at London and her team has seven kids on it. So she can't miss practice, she can't miss the games because her team has seven kids on it, and six kids play volleyball at once. So. Uh, we will, one of the things we talked about with her is that yes, go to practice, go to the games, and if you can get a report, you can get a report, and if you can come to the meetings, come to the meetings, and if not, well, you know, maybe you wanna watch the meetings. Read the minutes, and so I'll, we'll continue to, we'll have a meeting with her. After this one and we'll talk about what happened and we'll talk about, you know, what we might have asked her. And we had a couple of questions that came up already that might be useful for one. And for a student rep to attack, but she's just somebody to do it yet. She's coming along, so we're gonna continue to come along with. With Kaylee and see what we get. And recruiting is going not so hot with the rest of the kids. Because. In terms of dream jobs, this is the one, so. It's gonna have to be somebody's kid. So, maybe somebody who has to come in the same car as somebody who's in the truck. Giant, giant person, like, giant person. He doesn't wanna be, alright, so that's the student report, so we, we had a mentoring session with Natalie and that was very helpful, very nice, and. We're gonna get there.
There'll be a report.
We'll get there. Alright, so that's the student report and that's why, that's where we are on student. Alright, I'm gonna move on to board business here. And like I say, we're gonna skip preliminary budget discussion because we're not ready yet. I did speak to Mark myself via email on. Tuesday or Wednesday, and he asked a question about if he was allowed to return back to work for a short amount of time from home by his doctors asleep. Did I want, did he want me, was there a specific thing that he wanted done? And I said, yes, budgets. So if there's anything that he could do, it's gonna be budgets because that's gonna be critical to us very soon. Mike is readier than he usually is. And Mike is, Mike is very ready with the budgets, but he can't just bring them to us by himself. And if he takes them to hand, she, it's gonna be difficult for her to pick up on that because she'll be learning all along the way. So it'll be nice to have her here when she's here, because she can learn along the way while the budgets are there, but we need more back, and this is a case where.
No argument from me.
This is, this is the case here, this is gonna lead me right into my second question. And I'm gonna move down to the assistant superintendent position proposals. And in the packet, there is a letter that was sent from Mark Tucker announcing that he intends to retire at the end of this school year, and this, he sent that letter before. He realized that he needed to go have the surgery and before he was having the surgery. And in that letter, one of the things that he mentioned is that. This supervisory union more than likely needs to hire an assistant superintendent. That's the recommendation of this superintendent. And so. Initially, you say, oh, replace me with two people, you know, okay. It's just, you know, and it. I talked to the head of the VSB about the position a while ago when it was open. She said that doesn't seem like a position you're gonna be able to fill very easily, a superintendent with no assistant superintendent. I have started the process at the CCSU level or the CCSU level, CCSU board. Has allowed me to start the process of hiring the VSB. Seeking to get a consultant to talk about the position, and I've had those initial meetings and several rounds of discussions with the man who was our consultant. And he says you're not, you're probably not gonna fill the position without an assistant superintendent. It's too many meetings, it's too many districts, it's too many reports, it's too many budgets. And so it seems like, and again, this is, I'm bringing this down here because it's money, so at the SU board level, we talked about. This position and what it adds, and one of the first things that I asked for from Anne and Anne asked for from Mike is, what's this gonna cost? Each individual district. And so I think that piece of paper is in here. There's a piece of paper in here, there's some job descriptions of an assistant superintendent.
It's after the job.
After the job description. What you're gonna see. Because you're gonna see, there's a, there's a really relevant number for some other stuff on here too, and so if you go, we turn down to that.
You've gone too far.
Why not?
Right there.
Right there, okay. If, and so he was, he used eighty-five percent of what the superintendent makes and. Modelled that from a hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars for an assistant superintendent, which may not be the case, but that's not, that's the benefit, it's about this. Twenty-four and a half percent of that is Danville's base, and that is based very specifically on. Two things. And that's how we, how we build at the SU level. Fifty percent of that is based on full-time employees. So that's the device or for half of it, how many full-time employees are in each building, and so Danville employs twenty-four point five percent of the full-time employees in this building or so. The other half of it is average daily membership. So somewhere between the fifty-fifty ratio of how many kids we have versus how many people we have, we ended up with twenty-five percent of the supervisory union. As our costs for unshared, unbilled-back stuff at the SU level. And that would include, for instance, also Anne's job, Mark's job, Vanessa's job. The payroll lady's job, the grant writer lady's job, et cetera, et cetera, and there's a list of those that we're gonna get to in a minute. So what we're looking at for Danville would be if we hired an assistant superintendent. Roughly somewhere in the neighborhood of. Forty thousand dollars onto our budget. And then. This brings you to your questions, which I'll entertain now. Alright, so we spoke, we spoke at the SU meeting, sir.
Trying to be hard to say it. The level of accountability would go up greatly. With an assistant. I don't disagree, absolutely, and it's just like, well, I'll try to get. And, and not, not the person, but the position, just like, well, I'll, I'll get that to you next month when it's just like. Really should have it now.
So.
I'm gonna comment, I don't have a question, but. I think the need is definitely there, I don't doubt that. But with any increase that we can control, there's so much that we don't control in our budget, so I'm just feeling apprehensive with, I know it's not a huge amount and the.
It's a whole person. It's a huge amount, it is an entire pair of.
And what, yeah, right, okay, for that, for that forty thousand is, okay.
So that's how you, that, that.
Yeah, that's interesting, so. The need is there with all of these discussions. The building looms overhead, we have so many needs in the building. We have to choose where is the greatest need, and I, I would have a hard time justifying putting. Money. That we can control into some, not saying it's not needed, but not putting money into. Any tax increase, not putting that into the building would be hard for me right now.
So, Tim?
The, the struggle I have with this is that this is one of those where you're hiring two new people. So it's one thing where you have a person and they're an established person and they're like, hey, these are the things I do really well. We're gonna hire a person to do these things that I don't do well, and I feel like we had this conversation at one point when we were hiring. A co-principal, an assistant, I don't know, and forever ago, we've had this conversation during hiring. Because what you're looking at, these job descriptions are all very different, particularly this one. So I'm looking at the Barry one because I work in that district, and I didn't even know this, like, I know who this person is. I did not even know they counted as an assistant superintendent. Because what they do is so specific. They are in charge of one. Huge aspect of the district and they take all of that, they are the person. You don't funnel that to anybody else. Which if you have a person, you're like, here's the thing I can take off my plate, I know that someone would do really well. Which is very different than we're gonna hire somebody new. As like the lead and then we're gonna hire them, somebody who's their support person. But. Like, we don't, it's, it's hard to, it would be really hard to define that assistant superintendent role. Without knowing the superintendent role and I, and I. I, I a hundred percent hear what you're saying about the budget, but I also, I agree that this is an impossible. The fact that Mark has done this so long. With this many districts and this many, like, with this many schools. It's wild, it's, and, and I have said all along, like, we. We're gonna have a very hard time rehiring this position. And I think, I think, I, I feel as though we need to budget this position. And we need to hire this, the superintendent and then say, we're going to be hiring an assistant superintendent. Help us write that job description. I think that's sort of the sequence that needs to happen with that. Because. They're gonna know what their strengths and weaknesses are and what, and what they can give up control of, because that's the other thing.
I think the rest of what that opens to doing it, what you're talking about, the way that opens you up is. If you're looking for hires, and you say, one person and one job, all you can look for is experienced people. You have to have somebody really experienced that can come in and just. Just take weight from day one. But if you, if you're looking, you might take a young person who says, I'll get a mentor as my assistant. As, or you take an older person who might get a, a younger person as a protege. To work together, and so you get some sort of collaborative teamwork in that way. But like you say, you can't do it, you, but there's not, there are not two openings, right?
Right, and I don't, and I don't think you can hire, like, that would be my concern is the timeline, because you can't hire both at the same time. I don't, I don't think you can effectively hire both at the same time.
And just for the record, I like, there are, there have been. Three instances in the past, maybe four, in the past five years. Where we have not had a superintendent moving around in our, in, in our supervisory union in person for more than a month. This being one, we're currently in one right now, and some, somebody else has to do the physical part of being in that seat, and in this case, Anne is taking on a great amount of weight. Thank you, thank you for that. It's, so, this is a situation where if we had an assistant superintendent. To share the load, that's where you have a person, and like, we have two brand-new principals at the high school level, at the upper school level in Twinfield and here in. In Danville, who don't have a boss. Who have a boss who's not their boss, who's stepping into the boss, and so they're bridging a gap between two positions, trying to figure out what's going on. And if this is, and this is a case where there's, there just aren't enough people. And it's. Can't fix it, right, so it's. It's expensive, it's a person, and that's, that's the only, that's the first thing I saw when I said that, I said, that is what apparel with vengeance gets, that is.
You wonder, the point of Act forty-six was to create efficiencies and cost savings. I just, this isn't for us at this table right now, but I hope. The state of Vermont is looking at whether that's happening because. Right, I could agree with Tim, to manage five districts, who can do that?
The point of Act forty-six, though, and this is the man that I'm speaking to, there's the assistant, was to merge districts. Not to have districts that Danville fought so hard to remain independent. And is now not, not. In a district, they did, they refused to redistrict and refused again to redistrict, and then were redistricted and then appealed that decision and stayed undistricted. And so Danville fought all the way, so getting all the benefits of Act forty-six was always not what Danville wanted. Danville always wanted to be independent. And so that was the, that was the sowing. This is some more of the reaping, and we've seen this with your position and you needing more people to do special ed work. We've seen this with. Needing an extra payroll person, we've seen this, like, and it feels like bloat.
Yeah.
But it, it's just, you need more people to do that work because you, you can't do it. For these people, I mean, I'm, I'm a little frustrated about this because this position was in the budget whenever Mark took over. It's been offered to him more than once. By the, at the SU level, should we put an assistant superintendent in the budget? We had a conversation with him, as you'll recall, earlier when you were here, where do you need help in your. In your building. And this was two months before this, before the retirement came out. Because it seemed like he needed help. And it seemed, and so this is, but if this is where somebody's gonna come in and say, I will take this job, and you say, well, you're not gonna get any help. Then you're not gonna get any help, you're not getting any applicants.
Well, and if, if we had hired it sooner, we would have.
Somebody.
We would have somebody who knows something about what's going on at that level. And who knows what the, what their specific role is to, you know, if I could. It'd be nice to have that, but we don't.
Yeah, the situation that we're in now is the situation that we're in, but. So, this is coming down here not. To, not to be voted on, not to be, you know, consented to, not to be whatever, this is an SU board decision, the process, we started to hire. A superintendent here pretty quick, the actual, you know, the actual forming of the committees and everything. This goes back to the SU board, and I asked each one of the boards up there, take it back down to your local districts and talk to them about it, because this is the cost. And so, you know, you say, for PCHM, it's only nine thousand dollars, PCHM is small, nine thousand dollars is exactly. And in this case, you look at these numbers, nine thousand dollars is forty thousand dollars in terms of the budget to them. And in Cabot, it's nineteen thousand dollars, and Cabot doesn't have anything, it's just like we don't have forty thousand dollars. So, this is an expense that's gonna come up, it's gonna come down from the SU board. The recommendation of everybody that I've talked to at the state level and I've talked to several people is that this job is untenable without this position. So this may be a reality and this may cost us. People in this building, this may cost us boots on the ground. And we have this that may cost us boots on the ground, we have the ending of some funding that may cost us people. And we have the building, obviously, that's looming over there. So this is the recommendation of the outgoing superintendent, this seems to be the answer, then, so this is a reality that we're here to talk about. That's it. Woohoo. Alright. So what's not listed on the, on the agenda is the. How that. How the superintendent's gonna be hired in the particulars, but those will come to you in the next few days at U M A. That's not board business tonight. Alright, on the enrollment data, the enrollment data is next, it's in your report. Is there anything else you wanna say about it? That's the next item on our agenda. It was covered quite a bit in your report.
No, I, I think this, one of the things that. Natalie and I are talking. Natalie and I are talking about is what we're doing to recruit and promote, um. To get more kids, and the tricky thing is, the way historically that these happen with. Um, this, the schools in our districts, higher in our S U, as well as like Kingdom East. Is that we go present to the gate creators, well, that means you're talking to a bunch of thirteen and fourteen year olds. Um, so, you know, talking to, how can we figure out how to bring parents and get that information in the hands of parents and things like that. So that's, for me, it's not something I've been as involved in. Or not actually not involved in at all, but I'm inserting myself into it, um. But trying to even think there's a big um, Kingdom East fair at the college, um, you know, we can have it, and so what can we do? Who can we bring that's different, that just brings a different light and a different um, focus on doing that.
What? New questions there?
Unnecessarily questions, but just I'm curious if there's thoughts around. Like feeding and fostering the current youth grade class here to kind of make sure that. When they're in that position to make that choice next year.
Yeah.
What's gonna keep them here?
One of, one of the things we're doing this year is um, middle school student council, which hasn't happened in a bit. Um, so just giving kids that voice and making sure that they're heard and. Getting them more involved in the school community actively, um, in that way, so you know, of course, right now, they just want dances and sleepovers and things. But we'll, we'll move, whatever dances, I've gotten that question.
I, they really wanna dance.
They don't know what to do with them.
But yeah, I'm trying to, you know, help the, the middle school kids feel more. Like this is theirs, and they're not waiting for high school for it to be their school, you know, but they're part of it now, so. Once, once that's one month in, yeah.
Come up, you know, maybe come up with a proposal, have somebody sit here at the school board and say, hey, we wanna. And uh, put that student council right here.
Yeah.
You know, on the agenda. And if they want it, let them earn it.
Yeah, yeah. I don't think the student council has met yet, the middle school, so they will be, I think, in October.
Or you just make them reps.
Yeah. I think it's changed the board.
Do you know what you signed up for?
I think another thing, Melissa, too, to your question, is bringing some of the, um. Opportunities that they can't usually attend until high school electives, bringing some of those down into the mid, middle school specials classes. So that they're getting little tidbits in very, they're what, quarters or something, it's a very small snippet.
So it's half a semester, they're doing, they're working with, um, like Suzanne Potizer to do cooking class. And then they're going into the shop with um, Zach Baker and doing some building trade stuff, so they're getting those tastes of. What the high school offers.
Building trade, yeah, Suzanne's a big one that's new to them.
Yeah, they love Suzanne.
We added that, when we added that to her last year, so.
But do they get that already with Gamble Works, the seventh and eighth grade, isn't that, isn't that seventh through sophomore year, Gamble Works?
No.
I thought it was middle school.
That was the aspiration.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was, yeah, it geared towards ninth and tenth with the idea that it could provide some more.
Okay, so no seventh and, seventh and eighth.
Okay, no.
Right, we, that had been aspirational, but um. And we had a director of that, and then the director of that wasn't. None of that is, that. And what I have next is a mission and vision fund request.
For that fund.
We used that fund last year, we used that fund last, we used the mission and vision fund last year, but we had about forty-six thousand dollars, and then we used some of it for an artist in residence.
The last time with an artist in residence.
For every other year, it's literally.
This is, this is the fund with money and to do things like this. And we have, the, so we have, we have previously used the mission and vision fund for the Jekulu dancers.
Yeah.
We've also tried to pay for it with fundraising, which is hard. Yeah, it's hard to pay for that one fundraiser.
Yeah.
Yeah, they were last here, though. It was pre me, so yeah, if it was. Okay, there you go.
Yeah.
I was gonna say it was pre me, so.
So we're interested in getting them to come back, because back in twenty eighteen, it was awesome, and everyone raved about it. And it was a really positive experience for our students and staff alike, and so it would be fresh now, because it's. Been a little while, um, and they do an artist in residence, it's a really robust program. I think it aligns well with our mission and our vision, Abby Bartel helped um, complete this, because she is the contact through. Um, through Danville to Jekulu, um. So yeah, it is an estimated cost, because she couldn't get a. An actual quote from them or a contact yet, but we were kind of figuring out dates and what would work with state testing starting so much earlier this year. Um, coordinated, but yeah, we really think it would be a meaningful way to use that fund and. Get the whole school engaged as well, which is always our goal.
Transportation isn't six hundred a day, right? It's six hundred total.
They come from Burlington, so it would be mileage, um, which is like sixty-five cents a mile. I don't think it's per day.
I think that's the total.
But they're gonna come for five days, I think.
That is our hope, yes.
And so that is gonna be, I think they came in two vehicles, but when they came before, they came in two vehicles.
Yeah, cause that total that.
Nine gentlemen, I guess. That's my, that was my guess, the last time I saw it, nine, nine of them. Not that I'd count, but I mean, roughly none.
Yeah, and then we wanna try to tie it into a community event, um, too, yes.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
Alright, and so the parameters to use the mission and vision fund are that this goes through the leadership team. That when you've done everything here, it's, this is how it's gonna impact the community, and that's gonna be your leadership team, and I have no problem with this, I like, I like this performance, I like these people. I've seen really engaged kids with these people, and it's good action for this one.
Does anybody remember how much money's in that fund, the mission and vision fund?
About like forty-two thousand. It was forty, it was forty-six and change, and then last year, we was like four, four, four thousand two hundred, so it's about forty-two and change.
Um, something that was put together by Jeremy. Yeah, and I think it was. Used what, once before this, so.
This is, this will be the third usage. That's mine.
We are very passionate, then.
Well, we sort of had, we sort of had some, we, we had a little delay there in the middle. We had a little delay there in the.
We did.
And this isn't paying for a magician, and this isn't paying for a guy on a motorcycle, this is paying for something, richest that gets. The, the, the magician and the unicycle guy get paid for via other ways.
I'll keep an eye out for them.
They show up, and they say, what about some money, and I'm, I'm a guy on a unicycle, and somebody says, it's a good idea, how are we gonna get that money, and.
You best start learning how to make animal balloons, you know.
Alright, you guys wanna do uh, Jekulu dancers, for, so if we, if we say that we wanna do this for the estimated cost of fifty-six hundred dollars. And then this comes back being more than fifty-six hundred dollars, but you'll have to come to us again. With the rest of the money, or you have to come out of the budget, so, but this is again, like, it's, if you didn't have enough money, then that's fine, cause you're only estimating, cause you can't be sure. So.
Get your approval.
And because this paper says fifty-six hundred, you wanna roll fifty-six hundred? Not to exceed fifty-six hundred for now?
Sure. That's great, I'd make the motion.
There's a motion not to exceed fifty-six hundred for the Jekulu dancers out of the mission and vision fund. For the twenty, for an arts festival. Second to here, alright, any questions? Alright, all in favor of the Jekulu fund, not to exceed fifty-six hundred arts festival, please say a. Me too, I'm in. Uh, the next one, I included in the packet, or any. Four or five pages out of the um, master agreement to collectively, collectively bargaining agreement with the C C A teachers, and in that packet. One of the things that we are allowed to offer, that we would offer only via our actions. We would say, if this year we intend to, by October the fifteenth, is we might consider offering early retirement. To uh, teachers who have um, reached the threshold for early retirement, which is a total number of seventy, more, more than age fifty, and more than twenty years of service in the, um. In the S U, and sometimes we also can offer that to, um. Support staff, if, if financially it makes sense. Um, the recommendation from the superintendent, the acting superintendent is.
Not to do that this year.
Not to do that this year, so the recommendation to them. For, from the, from the main office, is not to extend this benefit to the C C A or offer this benefit. In two years, three years ago, we offered it, no one took it. Uh, five years ago, somebody took it, and it's an expensive offering that we take, it ends up being worth about a hundred twenty thousand dollars over the course of a couple of years. Because you get to, you get a retirement over three years, and then you get health insurance for a couple of years. And so it would be an expensive benefit that we would offer. If we had the money, and we currently don't have the money. And so, we're discussing this now, and it's a no action thing unless you wanted to make action. And there's action possible, if, if you gotta change your mind and wanted to do this, against those recommendations, you tell me that. Alright, great, uh, we're gonna have no action on that, we're gonna move on. Alright, that is the end of the board business, that is the end of what we got for right now, I'm on the public input.
Status of vape detectors, cause it's really bad in the bathrooms.
It's. Let us get back to you, I, that, that question came up again from O B X, um, we'll get back to you on the particulars, we're gonna get, um. I thought it was gone.
It had been previously approved by the board, and then O B X brought it to me, and so I took it to Kaylee and said, this would be. Good for your first board report, you know, bring the student initiative in, so I don't know if we need your approval.
It's probably in the second budget, so it would be in a budget that's already gone, so.
Yeah.
Get a number, bring it to us, get them in, um, that would, is the sense of the board, get a number, bring us in, you know, put vape detectors on the upcoming agenda?
I know when we talked about, um, their. And we decided that we were gonna get them, and I don't know how or where they died, they're very unreliable, and they don't speak to you in real time. And that's a big drawback.
Why not regional, just send a bunch of research on them, so I don't wanna connect with them, cause they.
Who did, sorry?
They had students that were destroying them.
That's it, that's the thing about baby sex, is you can hit with a brick, it's, you can just hit right with a brick, and then they don't detect.
Support staff walking in when there are two people in one stall, and they're telling the girls, wait, when you use the stall, they are leaving for class, and nothing's happening to the two people in the stall.
That's untrue, there is.
I have a student that's been in the bathroom three times and told to go to class, while she's been waiting, because there's two people standing in the stall. And nothing happens.
She tells an adult something should happen.
Well, if the student policies are being enforced for their conduct, the students need to know that, because they're being told that students are getting away with. Whatever they want, hanging out in the parking lot and then yelling at you, so there's no punishment.
Oh, there, there is.
But you can't legally, but you can't legally share consequences given to other students.
Just cause somebody yelled at you, doesn't mean they got away with it, because they all think right now that all they have to do is yell at you.
I'm curious who those are, yeah, I'm starting uh, weekly meeting, not weekly, monthly meetings, they're weekly for me. Um, with each of the grade levels at high school, too, so I just went with tenth grade today.
Girls are trying to do the right thing, they're just very concerned that they're gonna get trouble by association.
I have a lot of ways for them to reach out to me, too, so I've shared my email with them, for ones that wanna do that, I have a mailbox outside my office. With letters and envelopes as well, so if they wanna be kind of private about it, they can share that way, so I've had a lot of younger students come to me, not so much the older ones, but yeah. Yeah, it'll take them a while to get to know me.
It's a box outside your office. Um, if, uh, if they didn't feel comfortable, we, you know, walking by, oh, she dropped something in there, they could leave it with. Um, kitchen staff or something like that.
Absolutely, yeah, and I have a box in the.
Absolutely anonymous.
Yeah, I had a student put it in my office box this week, a note to me. Yep.
The downfall of this small school, too, is this person doesn't wanna be the rat. They just avoid each other in the hallway, and unfortunately, they start rumors, so you need to know what the rumor is.
That's, no, I know, I've heard that I will get kicked out, just like Larry did, they'll bully me out, just like they bullied Larry, I'm like. Now, I told them, I'm gonna be here until all my hairs are gray, not to like pulling Obama or something, that happened four years, but.
Teenage girls will do it to you without me, Grandma.
Yeah, so, yeah, they'll, they'll get there.
Alright.
Like, we have, I'm looking at our minutes, I'm adjusting them as I go, and we have something for update on Randy for this meeting, what was that?
That, that got pulled back off. And so.
Seventy-five, or? Was it the um, batting cage?
It was gonna be the batting cage, but I talked to Randy, and he asked to be pulled off the agenda, so.
Yeah, that's all, good.
Yeah, so there was no, there was no update from Randy, Randy's got an update actually going to Twinfield, that's what I understand, they have a lot of similar questions to us about. What services they're getting for the no dollars they're paying.
Yes. That's the big question.
Well, they're not paying any dollars, but if they complain about the service they're getting for no dollars from Randy.
Yes.
I, I hope, I hope he takes that, um.
We also had, I don't know if this is something we need to talk about, again, town meeting committee update.
Oh, so I pulled that off the agenda, cause that meeting's tomorrow, uh, it's a public meeting, you're all invited. It's gonna be great, um, it starts at seven, and it ends at nine something, and it's about time meeting. And so, please come, put on my meeting, I'm coming, and you can join the committee on my step.
So for future agenda items, you have vape detectors, uh, preliminary budget, financial reports.
And then you have financial, financial reports, specific financial reports, and just, if you wanna help me by laying out specifically what you want, so I can take it to Mike. I'll give him a month, a month to see it, so that you, you can work it into a schedule.
Yeah, I think he's pulling, he's pulling them anyway, just to bring them, put them in the packet, or, you know, quarterly would be good.
Will we have the building committee update the next one, too, that should go?
Well, we should, probably the building committee, which would be the minutes of the meeting, that is, our next meeting is the building committee meeting, which is on next. The ten twelve? Ten thirteen is Thursday? Ten Thursday, ten Thursday, a Thursday, that's all I know, it's on Thursday, the Thursday. Whatever Thursday is, that's when it is, because, and that was, we had it on the tent, we all agreed.
Yeah.
It was gonna be on the tenth, and then Rob said, I can't come on the tenth, and that's, everything should be just do all, because Rob is, um. Usually we need the most, so I moved my thing, and now it's on the twelfth.
Okay.
So building committee on the twelfth, that's our next meeting, our next regular meeting is, um. Obviously, the first Monday of the next month, which I think is gonna be the sixth. Somebody pull the calendar up, that should be, uh, November the sixth. I thought I'll get your haircut on Friday.
So I think the seventh is a Tuesday.
Oh, so it's on election day, alright. So November the seventh.
Yeah, November the seventh would be a Tuesday.
On November the seventh is the Tuesday, that's the meeting. We have that one, um, on. The twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh. There is a V S B A regional meetings, the annual meetings in, um. Like, like Maury, they give you lunch, they give you dinner. You have to stay there the whole time, they never let you leave, if anybody's just sitting going to sign up. Anyway, anyway, those exist, those are there, if you want those things, and, um, don't, that's. So those are the next things that we have, I should have some information for everybody that's gonna go out, um. Supervisory reunion wide about the superintendent search. And um, it's gonna go out, you guys will be copied on it as um, board members, but it won't be relevant to you quite yet, we'll talk about that at the next meeting. And I'm gonna go with that one, so that, that process started, and we won't get any updates here, other than you just chittered chatter, I think. Feels like they took them at the S U level, cause the S U's doing a higher. And that's it, that's all I have for tonight. And we'll follow, and a motion to return.
I'll make a motion.
I have a motion to return on the table.
Sure, second.
So I had a motion to return, I got a second to return, anybody wanna return, please say a. I were out at six forty-nine, who came in, who are the attendees?
Katie and Lindsay.
Katie White, Lindsay Mitchell.